Okay, I've got seven o'clock and I think there's some people in the audience who are probably interested in watching a football game tonight. So let's get started. Welcome to the town of Long Beach Town Council meeting for January 10th of 2022. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, all right. First off, election of council president. So at the first meeting of the year, new council president needs to be elected by the town council. I'll entertain a motion for nomination.
I would make a motion to nominate Bob LaBeur.
Yes, there's a second.
I'll second that, John Wall.
A discussion. All favor, we can't say aye. So John Coker.
Aye.
Mary Lou. Mike Johnstone.
Aye.
John Wall.
Aye.
Well, thank you for that vote of confidence. And with that, I will continue with the meeting. Opening remarks again, because of that football game tonight, we're going to make sure that public comments are limited to two minutes. Next approval of minutes, I don't believe, Bill, we have any minutes for approval. They haven't been done.
They're pending.
Okay, so they're pending. Police Department report chief.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. The Long Beach Police Department responded to 140 calls for service when compared to 68 calls for service in 2020 during the month of December for an increase of 72 calls for service. During the month, we reported nine incident reports that documented a total of five arrests. Of the five arrests, four out of the five arrests were related to operating while intoxicated, that were related to traffic offenses, and the fifth arrest was a felony arrest for criminal recklessness related to a road rage incident that began on U.S. Highway 12 and ended in the town of Michiana Shores. It was investigated by Deputy Yagelski, and a warrant was sought, and the individual surrendered about a week later. Overall, it was a steady month as the weather was above average, so therefore we stayed pretty busy. In summary, I just wanted to briefly go over the totals for last year. For 2021, we either responded to or initiated 2,450 calls for service when compared to 1,912 calls for service in 2020, for an increase of 538 calls for service for the year, which is a 30% increase in our calls for service. So I'm very proud of the efforts of all the members of the Long Beach Police Department. I want to publicly thank each deputy for all their efforts, which averaged out to about 204 calls for service each month. The month of December, we did not meet with the police commission. There wasn't much on our agenda. Therefore, that meeting was canceled. So there is no police commission report tonight.
Okay. Volunteer Fire Department report, John Wall.
What I'd like to do tonight is, we'll throw this a little out of order. Usually I do the volunteer fire department report after we do the actual, or the commission report after that. I'm going to kind of combine them, which I've kind of typically been doing anyway. We've done, you know, our organization continues to evolve. We've had some significant new membership over the last few years. And what we've decided to do is change the leadership up a little bit in the interest of freshening the upper ranks and allowing some of the younger people to rise up into some rank. And what that means is I'd be retiring, or I have retired as of December 31st as the chief, and we now have new officers in place. And a couple of them are here tonight. I'd like to introduce you to the new officers of the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department. We have a triumvirate of chief and assistant chief, Kurt Ernst will be taking the chief position. He is going to handle liaison with other departments and the county and the purchasing functions and some of the other administrative tasks. Tom Yem will be co-chief with him. He's here this evening. Tom will be handling inner relationships between the town and the fire department in terms of things like the report and handling the fire commission meetings and those sorts of things. Dan Sells will also be sharing that chief duties with, his outlook is the operational side, equipment, maintenance, and fire scene operations. Tom is also, Tom Yem's also been responsible for the training. I think he plans to spin that off to a couple of our new cap, or at least one of our new captains. So we have two new captains as well. Megan Applegate will be assuming the role of captain, and Brian Wright will be assuming the role of captain. So again, we've done this in the interest of freshening up the ranks and giving the younger people an opportunity to move along in rank and also to get us tired old guys to the sidelines so we can observe and help. None of us are leaving, but that's the new slate of officers. So I'm going to call on Tom to introduce himself real quick, and he will provide the monthly report for us this evening.
Thank you very much, John, and thank you all for letting me attend your new meetings now. And again, thank you, John Wall, for all the great years of service. You're not going anywhere. You're still a member of the fire department. And we expect that you'll be an active member as our deputy chief. So for those that don't know me, I've lived in Long Beach since 1999, raised my family here. I've been a member of the Long Beach Fire Department for 18 years and look forward to continuing to serve the town of Long Beach. Just to give a quick report, during the month of December, we had, we answered seven calls during the month of December, one on the fireside, six on the medical side. Year-to-date numbers were actually, on the fireside, we had 43 calls year-to-date as opposed to 50 from a year ago. Our average number, average turnout of peace personnel on a fire call is eight, and total number of people responding to fire calls through the year has been 332. From a medical standpoint, we had 127 medical calls this year as opposed to 84 a year ago. That is a 51% increase in medical calls during the year. In fact, our total call volume, we had a total of 160 calls during the year versus 134 the year before. For a medical, our averages, for a fire call, our average response time is 4.4 minutes. For a medical call, our average response time is 4.39 minutes. Our department has donated a total of 3,460 hours of volunteer service that we've recorded this past year, and we give a dollar value of that, about $142,000 per year. So that is the call on our breakdown of our calls. I mentioned we had seven calls during the month of December. Just to give you a data point, we've had six calls in the first week of January. So even though we have less people living in the town of Long Beach, our call volume continues to expand. And most of those calls are on the medical side with one fire call in the last week. As well, just so you know, we had, two of our calls during December actually happened on Christmas Day. And just so you know, we have very strong participation even during the holidays. So the, your fire department doesn't go to sleep, doesn't go on vacation. There's always someone here taking care of the community. Couple other quick things. Tonight, we're wrapping up our annual professional stats. We do this every year. We do a set of practical exams for every one of our fire department members, and we do a written test that's being finished up this evening as we speak. As you can see, I'm down here at the station. I don't know, John, if you've mentioned before, but I wanted to make the town council aware that we have received a significant grant from FEMA for new self-contained breathing apparatus, the SCVA units. If anybody has been in the fire station, we've got a number of boxes here. We sponsored a grant for Long Beach Fire Department, Michiana Fire Department, and Lepore County hazmat. Total value of this grant was over $300,000. The value to the town of Long Beach is over $120,000 of new equipment that has all come from the federal government due to a grant that the Long Beach Fire Department initiated and ran. We will be rolling that equipment out over the course of the next few months as we finalize paperwork. Want to give a thank you out to Bart DiLaBarre and the fire department for setting up the ice rink. Those that may have driven by this weekend, that was being used quite well by a number of people in the community. So thank you, Bart DiLaBarre and fire department for setting that up again this year. Last couple of things, a couple reminders just to, for the town to check your batteries and your smoke detectors and your carbon monoxide detectors. You see a lot of calls these, this time of year with batteries not being there. Also a reminder to any people in the community that are leaving for an extended period of time. If you could please have a key holder to your house, either a neighbor or even with the, the police department, it would be appreciated so that if we're at a call in the middle of the night, we need to get into your house, we're able to get into your house to investigate a potential alarm. And lastly, just on a call out, we have a website, Long Beach Fire Department website. I encourage you all to go out there. There are plenty of safety tips out there about fire as well. We profile a firefighter every month, so you get to know who the firefighters are on your community. Each month, there's a new profile of the people that are in this department. So thank you very much. With that, I will end my report.
Thanks, Tom.
Bob, one last thing I want to mention. Tom's statistics about medical calls are significant. That jump increase over the prior year is for 2021. But as you all know, 2020 was also a COVID year, and we had a massive increase in the medical calls in that year as well. So for 2021 to be up that far from 2020 is very significant for us in terms of medical calls.
Okay. Street Department report, Tom Dolph.
Hey, everything's been going pretty smooth for the past month. We finally got some snow, so we've been out, found salt and mist needed, and all of our equipment is staying together nicely, so we're not having any issues there. And otherwise, we are kind of keeping track of all the snowplow equipment and working on some of our spring/summer equipment and working on some mapping updates to our system that we have in place.
Good deal. Street Commission report, John Wall.
Community John.
Sorry about that. I do want to point out one, we did not meet, we hope to meet in January. We we really haven't got too much going on other than what Tom had relayed to you. But I do want to point out that we are meeting with Haas Engineering, Haas and Associates on Wednesday to review the 2022 Community Crossing Grant, which we hope to apply for in January. So we'll run through those numbers with them. Both Tom Dolph and myself will be at that meeting, and we will authorize them to go ahead and apply for that. And again, we can always reduce that if need be, but it's a little more conservative program than we've done a couple of years ago, but it is a little more significant than the prior year. The Budget and Finance Committee is aware of the numbers. The only other thing I want to point out is we did get a quote on our hydro excavator that we've been talking about trying to purchase through the stormwater funding that's been authorized by the town council. So we do have a significant amount of money in the fund, and we hope to maybe purchase that in the first quarter of the year. Tom got one quote in on the machine that we're interested in. It's about $103,000. That's almost $10,000 or $15,000 less than what we had originally anticipated. So hopefully we'll be able to get before the budget and finance and get to the town council with a specific quote or a couple of quotes, and we can get that thing purchased in the first quarter of the year. That's all I have on street.
Okay. Park Board, John Coker.
Yes, I think Zach Metz is going to take over on the report.
Yep, hello, everybody. So our last meeting was a combination of our November and December due to the holidays. Got an activities report for you. Sarah continues to do a great job for the town of Long Beach on organizing a lot of events on the community center, and there's a bunch more coming up here. So I'm just going to quickly list them. She's doing turn-up the fitness classes, and that's free every Saturday, starting at 8:30 in the morning. There's bingo, that's also free. The next bingo session's Tuesday to January the 18th at 5:00 p.m. There's macrame and music trivia nights that are all the times for those will be listed on her Facebook page and on her calendar. Hipster art class, there's one of those Saturday, February the 5th at 10:00 a.m., and then hopefully Tai Chi. Will be coming back soon if we can get over the, get over the hump on COVID. So check out her Long Beach Activities, Indiana Facebook page. If you're on Facebook, she's putting updates up there quite often. And I try to post the same updates on the Parks Board Facebook page as well. And you can also email her at longbeachactivities@gmail.com and ask her any questions about any of the activities I've just mentioned. So thanks to Sarah for providing some things for the community to do in the wintertime. Next thing is the life rings that Chiefs Listack and Parks Board have been talking about for a while. Those have arrived at the town hall. So we're going to work with chief on where to put those and when to get those installed down near the beaches at most of our stops next year, or this year. So that's good. We continue to work on stop 24. We need a sign that's going to indicate where town hall and the police department is. We're just trying to figure out where exactly we're going to put that. So we're working with Tom, the Streets Department, and with chief about how large that sign needs to be, where we're going to put it, but there will be a sign replaced as stop 24. Our final invoices for 2021 were discussed and received and managed with Bill, so we're finished with a budget for the year, which is good. And then we agreed to combine our January and February Parks Board meetings, and we're going to hold that meeting February the 8th at 6:00 p.m., and it will be a Zoom meeting. So any questions?
So Zach, those activities at the community center, they're all masked and social distance, right?
Yes, correct.
Hey Zach, one quick thing I just wanted to note, you know, when we got the grant for stop 24, and then we did the vegetation and the planting, we agreed to, you know, maintain that, and I know you guys do this in general, but it might be, you know, we talked about trying to get rid of some of those invasives and maybe trying to cover up some of that concrete rubble and debris and stuff on that lot just below the parking area. So maybe in, and I apologize, I'll try to make your next meeting, but I just want to touch base with you on it. It might be a good idea if we can kind of meet down there and take a look at some future plans, even if we don't get them this year, maybe the following year.
Yeah, we're working with the Beach Garden Club as well on that. We've also got another contractor that's been helping us out with landscaping at 24. So it has been on the meeting, we have been discussing the meetings, John, I'm just trying to hit the highlights, but definitely come to our next meeting and we'll get your input on that for sure. Or anybody else in that matter that wants some input on 24.
Okay. Thanks, Zach. Community Center report, John Coker.
Yes, hadn't noticed. The Y had to close at 1:00 today due to illness and short staffing. Hopefully, nobody had COVID, but anyway, they had to close early. There's a discussion of allowing the park board to fund sprucing up Room 13 as this and the gym are the main rooms used by the park board for activity, for the activities coordinator for setting up new programs. The committee is ready to resume building upgrades which were planned before COVID. The front area of the building and hallways are at the top of the list, along with repairing the cooling tower, and individual heating and cooling units, and an ADA compliant restroom. The building is, you may all know, the building is only open when the Y is open, and the normal hours of operation are Monday to Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And they're closed on Sunday. Our next meeting for the community center is February 7th at 4:00 p.m. It'll be on Zoom. Everybody's welcome to watch and attend.
Thanks, John. All right, Water Advisory Commission, Mary Lou.
Water Department didn't meet in December. It was a holiday. So we will meet again, we will meet on January 24th via Zoom.
Budget and Finance, Bill.
We received our tax receipts a little later than normal, but we did get them in right before Christmas, and the receipts were about $540,000 into all of our major tax funds. We also did receive, right at the end of the year, $35,000 into the riverboat fund, which was a little more than I had expected, but very nice. We have about $2.6 million in the bank, and we have closed the year with under budget in all of our funds. So we'll be reporting to the state sometime before the end of February. That's it.
Any questions?
I'd just like to make one quick comment on the budget and finance. Carl Sender will be there on Wednesday. I didn't get a chance to talk to you today, Bill, but he's going to bring that capital plan revisions to us on Wednesday, so we'll be able to take a look at that.
Okay.
Do we have anything more to say about the capital plan tonight, John, or?
I'd like to add it to the agenda if we have some time.
Okay. Do you want to talk about it now? Because it's kind of a budget and finance thing?
Sure, we could. Essentially, Mike and I have been working kind of hand-in-hand on that along with the budget and finance people. What we've done is we've assembled some information from all, you've heard me, you've heard me with this epistle before, but we've assembled some information from all the different department heads, including, you know, Mark with his police needs, the town center, the IT, the community center, the fire department, and the street water. So we've got a spreadsheet assembled with some preliminary numbers that we that we know we need to at least be looking forward for the next five years. And what we'd like to do, actually on Wednesday, we'll have some revisions to that because we're trying to, Bill pointed out rightly so, that we have the loader that has to be paid for in the next couple, three years, as well as squad car loan. So we want to make sure we're accurate on Wednesday with the budget and finance guys. But what I'd like to request the town council to do this evening is I look at our reserves, you know, we've got, the town has some reserves, the water department has some reserves. Those add up to some significant dollars. The Indiana Bond Bank has some potential for us on equipment. We've got our art money. There's some potential, as Mark Swistec has pointed out from the county, for LOIT, which is a local option income tax potentially coming up about two years out. And then we also have, the Lepore County has decided to give some money to each fire department in the coming year, in 2022. In addition, there's infrastructure money out there floating around. Mr. Rizby's on it this evening, and I know he sent me a nice article about some funding that's going on over in Lake County for sewers. So essentially, I look at it as a very positive time for us, but I think it's incumbent on us to, you know, make a commitment that we're at least in favor of supporting a capital plan for all of our departments. So what I would ask this evening, and I'm not sure if I'm supposed to do this as a resolution or what, you know, Mike points out rightly so, this does not authorize anybody to spend the funds, but we want to get a general feel for the five town council members about whether they support that capital plan. We did send out those preliminary numbers to all of you, and I'd like, if it's the correct thing to do, and maybe Chris Willoughby could advise me on that, if it's the correct thing to do to have a resolution that supports the capital plan as it stands, with the understanding it will come back for any expenditures through the normal bidding process, and we will have revised numbers at the Budget and Finance Committee on Wednesday.
With all respect, I would say that those individual purchases then would also be by approval by the town council. Correct, as part of that motion?
Yes, exactly right, Mike. Thanks for the correction.
John, this is Chris Willoughby. I think a resolution would be good form. That way it's out there and easier for a clerk's office to keep track of, and you can attach that capital plan to it. So I would recommend that you do that.
And we could have that ready for next meeting, couldn't we?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So I guess we would put that together and make sure it comes back to the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Is there general support, is there general support this evening for the capital plan?
I support it.
I see some shaking heads. That's good.
Oh, yeah.
I do.
We gotta.
Notting, not shaking.
Look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I would just add to this whole thing. This is the first time in recent history that the Budget and Finance Committee has put together a, I think, a very well thought out five-year capital plan. And quite frankly, from the standpoint of financial fiscal responsibility, we're looking out into the future much further than we have in the past. So hopefully what this will become is somewhat of an entree into the budgeting process on an annual basis. It's a big, it's a big effort. It's a big number. And, but nevertheless, it's an effort that I think will serve us well as we go forward.
Good deal. Okay, Human Resources, Bill.
No meeting.
Tree Board, Dr. Yuhas, are you out there?
Doctor Yuhas. Hi, thank you. I'm here. All right. Hi, everybody. Thank you. Dr. Yuhas from the Tree Board. I'm here with a petition from a family that purchased a property, a property on 1302 Lakeshore Drive. Their plan is to have a tear down and then replace it with a new dwelling, possibly starting this spring, to be completed roughly in the spring of 2023. They are requesting of the Tree Board an opinion on two cotton, two stands of cottonwood trees, one on the east side of their lot, and then three conjoined trees on the west side of their lot. These are all facing south at the border of their lot adjacent to Lakeshore Drive. The homeowners assert that Mr. Tate, the surveyor who did the survey for the home sale, has told them that the trees are on town property. Their concern is safety of their building and home, and I quote, have these huge trees fall onto their property. So their opinion is that these trees should have been taken out years ago based on what they were told by one of the contractors who would do the stump grinding. Currently, the bid that they obtained for this work is $15,000. They did not get a bid for determining if the trees can be safely trimmed back rather than cutting down the trees. And this is of concern to the homeowners because at this time, there is a limb that did break off and is laying in their driveway. It's about three and a half, four feet long, and they feel that the trees are a health and safety hazard. The homeowners feel that because the trees are on town property, and they assert that the trees have not been properly tended to, that the town of Long Beach should pay the $15,000 fee. It is our recommendation at this time that we get more information, and this would be via a second opinion from what is called at least a level two, possibly a level three, certified tree risk qualified arborist. That would give us more of an in-depth assessment of the health of the trees and the safety of leaving them, trimming them, or do they need to be cut down? We do have two arborists that we know of in the region that have that kind of credentialing, and we could reach out to them. I am here today requesting permission to hire either of the two arborists contingent on their cost and availability. We would like to determine if the trees can be trimmed of dead branches and still be safe, or do the trees need to be taken down, and what would they charge for that either service? I propose with the permission of the town council that I be authorized to contact them to determine their fee for consultation and possible tree work. I would then return to you for your final authorization, again, contingent on their proposed fee. I have heard that we need to get three bids for a municipal project. I don't know if that's true, and I do need the town council's guidance on that. Also, I am aware that the Tree Board has a $500 operating fund, and I don't know if we can get a bid, I don't know if we can get a bid to get a certified arborist out there to examine those two trees for that amount of money, or would it maybe cost 500 per tree? I just don't know. So I need guidance on how to go about interviewing and hiring a certified arborist that could give us an opinion about the safety of those trees and how to manage them. We are aware of the concerns for public health and safety, and that is paramount with the Tree Board and, as we all know, with the town council. The homeowners are here today, and, you know, I told them to come and hear my presentation, but at this time, it's a simple request. I would like to get a second opinion from a certified, at least level two risk-trained arborist. So that's pretty much it at this time.
Bill, how many bids do we need to get?
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, yes, Bill.
We need to get.
Opinions, really, one or two. There's not a state rule on getting an opinion, but we may get bids, and Chris Willoughby may have a better sense. Normally, we try to get three bids, but usually it's for things much larger than $15,000.
Yeah, Dr. LaMay, this is Chris, just to follow up. I agree with Bill, and these are for services anyway, and so if she gets a couple of quotes, that'll be good for you guys to be in a position to make an educated decision.
Make a motion that we get a couple of bids?
Bob?
Bob, I also think we should include Tom Dolph. He's been here a long time, and he's been involved in these things before, and I think he could lend some expertise to it.
Mrs. McFadden, I did talk to Tom.
Okay.
And he did mention one of the two arborists that we are looking at. So, yeah, we're more than happy to work with Tom and have his input. He drove by, he looked at it, and he said, get an arborist. So my question, when you say two bids, we really want evaluation, like a physical examination of those trees.
Dr. Lemay, I will follow up with Dr. Yuhas tomorrow because I have some other information that helpful to her board on a different matter, so I can lay out the process for her to get the quote and be able to report back to the council.
Excellent. Does anybody have?
Yeah, I made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Annabelle, sounds like, why don't you talk to Chris, and we'll get this going?
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Did you take a vote on that, Bob?
Yeah, I guess we'd better do that. I'm in favor. Mary Lou, are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Mike Johnston, are you in favor?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Thanks for keeping me on my toes there, John.
Bob, I want to thank the Treeboard for volunteering and spending all this time and doing, you know, instead of presenting a problem, they come and try to present a solution, and I think that's a big help to all of us.
Yep.
And I also want to say that, don't tell the cottonwoods, but I think they're junk trees.
Well, they are. I did take a look at them today. They are huge. I don't know how healthy they are, but they are big trees. And they're very cool. And actually, I think you said they're on town property. They're actually on the town right of way. I don't know if that's necessarily town property, but they are close to the road. And on Lake Shore Drive, that definitely would be the right of way. Building Commission, they have not met since the last town council meeting. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on December 14th. They considered a preliminary hearing for Mr. Cleary at 2007 Oriole Trail. However, he didn't have a site plan, coverage calculations, or septic permit, and so that got postponed to the next meeting. There was a public hearing at the Yoder property, 2003 Lawndale Avenue, and their variance was approved. There was also a public hearing on the Charlin Hill, for the Charlin Hill Property Owners Association at Stop 31. They changed what they were requesting and requested to put up just one sign designating that stop as a Charlin Hills shot stop. Their variance for other signs and for a fence were taken, they took those back, and that variance for the one sign was approved. And finally, the O'Neill property at lots 31 and 33, which is tentatively 1417 Lake Shore Drive, they also changed what they were asking for. They basically sought variances for the front setback and accessory structures in the front yard, and those variances were approved. The homeowner directly to the east was very concerned because they wanted to pound some sheet piling close to the property line. And that that had to be that was approved. They did, the homeowners next door did suggest that we get engineering advice about potential damage to their property, and I'm sure the Building Commission is going to take that into consideration when they consider that building permit, because I'm sure they'll be back with a building permit. So that was the BZA. Advisory Plan Commission didn't meet. Bill, Building Permit Revenue Report?
The Building Permit Revenue Report for December 2021, 13 permits issued totaling the value of the permits totaled $440,659, and the revenue to the town was $5,005,700. Two electric permits were issued totaling $293, and the December legal expenses totaling $7,952.57 were paid to Braji Nelson and James. Do we have a motion to approve the claims and the reports?
So moved. Is there a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead.
Any discussion? I'm in favor. Mary Lou?
In favor.
Mike Johnston?
Aye.
John Wall?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Bob, we're about $4,000 less last month on legal fees, so whatever we did, we need to keep doing that.
There we go.
Yeah, there's $48,000 right there.
And that, good stuff. People are being friendlier. That's nice. Okay, unfinished business. Town's executive order update. I personally see no reason to change what we're doing at the community center, the town center. Anybody disagree with that?
No.
So I would, I guess, I guess it's a town's executive order update. So I guess bottom line is, is we continue with what we're doing. Lake Shore Drive sewer update. John Wall?
We met with Haas and Associates and NIPSCO last week. It was a very productive meeting. They had two individuals from NIPSCO, one of their field operations engineers, and then Lisa Taylor, who runs the engineering for this particular project, and they also had their outside engineering consultant. So we spent some time discussing NIPSCO's needs and how we can make a compromised position on some of the NIPSCO gas relocations on Lake Shore Drive. Without, at the risk, I don't want to get into a lot of technical detail, but it sounds like we're going to get a little bit of relief on what our original problem was. They originally thought that they couldn't start their work until fall of 2022, and now they're telling us it's a 16-week duration. But by the time we left the meeting, they're going to come back to us in February with another meeting with a new proposal that will reduce the amount of work and also phase the work such that they can do some of the work around the lift stations and the east end of town, such that the contractors will have some work to be done in the fall of 2022 and through 23. So that was encouraging news from NIPSCO, which I'll tell you, in the construction business, that doesn't come along too often. What that allows us to do is more than likely bid the project. We, probably the latest would be March 1st. Hopefully, we can get a bid before that, but that's that's about where we sit right now. So we've had a minor setback with the utility conflicts, but the project is still moving on.
John, I just want to know, why, why does this come up at the end? Why, why wasn't this discussed a couple of years ago with NIPSCO?
Well, John, that's a great question, and I wish I had a solid answer for you. All I can tell you is, in my experience, like, for instance, in the Department of Transportation in Indiana, utility conflicts got to be such an issue over the last couple of decades that they actually let utility relocation contracts years ahead of their highway work, because it's such a problem getting these guys to do the work. So I kind of feel fortunate that they're telling us that they're going to be able to maybe get started in June with the phased work, such that the contractors can get their materials ordered and be ready to hit the ground in the fall with some substantial work. So it's a great question. I don't have a solid answer for you, other than to say, I know Haas has been talking to NIPSCO all through the preliminary engineering process and all through the summer, this summer, and the fall. And when you finally get to the right people and get them to sit down in a room, you can get something accomplished, but it often takes this amount of time to get that done, believe it or not. It's a large, it's a large ship, and turning it takes a lot of effort.
Okay, PTO policy review. So Mary Lou, you've got information for us, I think. I do?
I, after the December 28th meeting, Bill and I talked to Carl Sender. I think it was the third, that was a Monday. We talked to him Thursday. We sent him the information. You all have that information from prior times. The PTO and with combining vacation and sick leave, there were no improvements. The only additional cost is that employees now would not have to forfeit any sick leave. He has those numbers. Carl does. I don't know that Bill's heard back from him. I'm sure I would have heard from Carl. Have you, Bill?
No, I have not.
Okay. So that's where we're at. The employees, as you can see, many of them don't always take all their sick leave. There's an awful lot of people that actually forfeit it. That's why we made an offer to them. And as you remember, this all started probably last spring. I'm not the author of this plan, but I have, you have been at every meeting, and I've tried to carry out what you're, what you requested me to do. I'm, I guess I'd like to take a vote. Where does the rest of the council stand on this?
So the PTO is combining sick leave and vacation time.
Correct.
And our handbook says that if you're not sick, you don't use sick time. And yet, one of our departments has used up all their sick time for at least the last year.
No, they didn't. No, they didn't, Bob. I did a little survey on that. Even in 2020, several of them forfeited quite a bit of time. So that's incorrect. But I mean, I would hope that we don't keep going on that. We have pretty good employees. We only have 11. It's not like we're a major corporation. But I'm not the author. This wasn't my plan. I like it. The chiefs helped me. We carried out what you requested us to do. The only thing we were going to take away, we did the banking part because Chief Swistec had seen that in prior policies, and it's just a way for people to have something if they have something catastrophic, but there was a cap on it. And we talked about that at every HR meeting, and you were there. So now I think if you don't want the banking policy, we can get rid of that, but we, we need to take a vote. Either you want it or you don't. And if not, we just go back to the old plan, which they.
What do we anticipate the cost of the PTO policy changes?
There's no, there was no improvement in the PTO.
Well, it absolutely is, Mary Lou. If you have sick time that hasn't been used, we didn't have to pay for that. Now we switch to PTO time, and all those days will be used. So there is a cost there to the town. And that's, that's one of the things we need to know.
Okay, well, the total cost, and maybe I, Bill needs to tell me what it used to cost, the total cost without the chief included would be about, this includes vacation and sick leave base, or it's called PTO time, based on their years of service, and they each get six days of sick leave. These are only full-time people, would be about $63,000 a year. And I don't know what the prior years were. I don't have, I could try to look for that information.
What is Sender supposed to be giving us?
He's supposed to. Oh, go ahead.
Bill, you said Sender's supposed to be giving you something? What's he supposed to be giving us?
Well, he was just reviewing the plan and looking at the, at the cost, the prior cost. Although, you know, what Mary Lou says is true. Yeah, I agree with Bob to one extent, Bob Lemay, but, you know, basically, I don't agree that the people will take all of the PTO time just because they've got it. I mean, people don't always take all their vacation time either. You know, so it's not, you know, just because it's called PTO and not called sick time does not guarantee that they're going to take it all. So, you know, what we're working on is unfortunately, you know, sort ofs and, you know, maybes and everything. And I, you know, to me, the, you know, the biggest change is is if, if we had a PTO policy, and we have the same employees, and we give them a 3% raise, then it's going to cost us 3% more next year than it did the year, the year prior. And it's, you know, I mean, I don't think the people are going to get any sicker or get any less committed to the town.
Here's, here's one thing that I'd like to, I'd like to make a point, if I may. So the next, including the one we're talking about, there are three items on the agenda that we've been, you know, talking about relative to employee policies. The PTO is what we're discussing now. The holiday schedule's next, and then we have 2022 salaries for the two departments that we did not include in raises for beyond a 3%. I just want to point out that when we're shifting these, these kinds of dollars around, we just have to have accurate information. For instance, the holiday plan, Mary Lou, that we got from you, it includes hourly rates at base pay, but it doesn't include taxes or insurances. So if you're going to come to the town council, not you personally, but anybody, the HR committee is going to come to the town council with a proposal for these three items, the holiday schedule, the PTO policy, and some salary adjustments. We need to have accurate information, including payroll taxes and insurances, so that we understand how much money we're spending. It'd be, it'd be, you know, disingenuous for us not to ask for that. If somebody comes and wants to spend $100,000 on whatever it is, we need to have written information that includes all the costs, whether we're buying something or we're making adjustments in the, in the compensation plan for the employees. It's only fair. And I asked last time, and I haven't seen it yet, if we're going to revise that PTO document that you guys presented to us last month, I'd like to see it in its revised form. It's no different than when we pass any ordinance. If we, if we don't see it in its revised form, it's difficult to vote on.
I did send it out, John, and I pointed out that the only part that was that we, Mark and I had left in there was the banking, and that can be easily removed.
Well, I suggest to you that we need to see a final version before we vote.
Can we do this? Go ahead.
I would also add, and I think this is already touched on, and I'm not sure we've addressed it. What's the incremental difference in cost between 2021 and 2022? I've heard the $60,000 number, but what is that in relationship to what we spent in 2021?
That's what I asked for a month ago. You know, what did we pay? What was our expense last year? And what do we anticipate this year? Just to get an idea. You know, what was, what was our total revenues for the town last year? Our expected revenues this year? I mean, just to give us a better idea, or give me a better idea, anyway, of, of the money that's, that we're going to be spending. I'm not against any of this. I just would like a little more, I don't know, information.
I just want to understand what the incremental increase is.
I don't know, I know, I don't have access to that. It would have to be Bill or Carl Sender. And I would, and I've asked him for that, and so, I mean, I, what, I don't know what else you expect me to do.
Let's do this. I'd like to suggest that we set up a special meeting, maybe in a couple of weeks, with Bill, Town Council, and Carl Sender. We have all the data we can get, so we can put this thing to bed. We don't want to let this go too long, because we're into the new year. But if we can get Carl Sender to attend a meeting, get the information all together, I think we'll get closer to getting this resolved. And I would suggest we do that for the next, the three items, the PTO policy, holiday schedule, and the salaries.
Can we jump ahead to holiday schedule?
Well, I'm dealing with all three of those in my.
I understand, but, but to me, I've, the thing that seems to get confused here is the, the holiday schedule. When, when we come into, to the office in, on Martin Luther King Day, on Veterans Day, and on President's Day, we cannot reach anybody in the county. We cannot reach anybody in the state. So it's not as productive a day as we normally have. So it is my opinion that while it is a benefit to the employees, if they are getting their work done in three less days, then the only cost to the town is for the police. Tom Dolph may stay home, and, and I've never seen us on any holiday have to hire somebody to fill in in the street department, hire somebody to fill in the water department, hire somebody to fill in in the clerk's office. So basically, when the Fourth of July comes, it comes and goes. So the only cost, out-of-pocket cost, now you can argue that, gee, we're giving these employees three more days. That's like more vacation and everything else. But it does not cost the town any more money to give them those, those three extra days. And we're, you know, what we're trying to do is be competitive, and we're still not as, as competitive as with, as with Michigan City or La Porte, or La Porte County, or the state. So, you know, to be simple about it, we came up with $27 as the average salary for a policeman. I added 1.2 because, because the benefits are 18.85%, so let's just call it 20%. That's easy. Let's take 20% of, of $27, of $27. Let's make it $6, which is a little more than 540, and that's $33. You multiply $33 times 24 times 3, $33 times 72, and you've spent $2,376. I realize that I'm going fast, but that, that's basically less than $2,400. And that really is the only cost. So I think we're, I understand the PTO may be more difficult, but the holiday schedule, to me, is a no-brainer. And it should be done, it should be approved just at this meeting right now, and we can take that off the table and then start talking about. And then start talking about the salary for the employees and the PTO policy. But I mean, does that, am I speaking too fast or does everybody get it?
Saying, Bill, it just seems to me that we ought to look at this benefits package as a total. You know, and we could do that at a special meeting. In a week. To me, that's, that would be a more reasonable, my, my head gets around that better than it does dealing with this in a piecemeal fashion.
Okay.
That's my idea.
Bob, but with all, with all due respect, the only issue is, and we discussed this last time around, with the exception of those two departments that we were going to. Review further, I think we should act on the salary increases for the balance of. Of our staff and employees now rather than push that down the road. I mean, I think that's something that we all decided on in our last meeting. I think we really should act on that piece. I think in the good faith of, of the folks that work for us, I think that would be appropriate. The other, the other items, I don't disagree.
All right. So what do you say? We move PTO and holiday schedule to a special meeting? And Mary Lou, can you find out when Carl might be available and then we can all make ourselves available?
I can do that. Or I'll talk to Bill in the morning.
That'd be great. Okay. We'll get that.
Not everybody on it.
Within the next two weeks.
I don't know why we couldn't do the holiday schedule too right now with the, with the salary.
I agree. I agree.
Because that's a simple one. I mean, it's not, you're talking peanuts on the holiday thing and, and, you know.
And next week's Martin Luther King Day because we don't get to play bridge at the senior center. So.
There you go. I, I, I agree with John. We should include, um, the, the holiday and the, the employees that are not. Part of the two departments and act on those now and then. Meet other, other remaining issues. That'd be my recommendation.
You know, we already voted to give the raise, the 3% raise across the board last time.
I agree.
I'm, I'm confused about what you're proposing on salaries this evening.
Well, I was just listening to Bob and I, I heard, what I thought I heard was postponing the salaries in its entirety. If I'm wrong, John, I apologize.
No, I think we said.
I think we were only talking about the four individuals, Mike. They, even the, even the, the way I recall that last meeting was. We gave 3% to everybody, including the four individuals, and we were going to look at the four individual, and in addition, we gave. The outliers bigger boosts than 3% already, and that we were only going to take a look at the four individuals.
Thanks for the clarification. I agree.
Uh, we have already, you know, the, the salary ordinance sits waiting for signature with a September 28th date with all those numbers in it. The employees have already been gotten their first paycheck on the seventh. So, you know, I have already entered exactly what's in the salary ordinance with those four employees. So.
Excellent.
And as far as the holiday schedule now, have we confirmed that the five towns that we compared ourselves with? Have the same holiday schedule that we're going to?
No, they have greater. I think, I think.
They have a greater one. We just asked for three more.
This will be, we're looking at Westville and Chesterton and.
Bob, we went over that. If you want me to get, I didn't come prepared, but in each, every HR meeting I spelled out what, what Mark and I were looking at, who we contacted.
It's my understanding they're asking for three and, and some of these other areas have like four, five and six. So.
Yeah. And I mean.
I don't think we're.
I don't know how many times you want me to tell you, and you've been at my meetings. So.
No, I'll, I think, Mary, let's, let's be real clear here. Your holiday schedule cost that you gave us a couple of days ago has two columns. One is cost of one holiday, one is cost of three holidays. I'm looking at it now. I can share it if you'd like.
No, you don't need to. I have it.
Well, I'm just saying for everybody else's benefit here. Let me, let me pass. So if you look at the total at the bottom. For the three days, it shows about $7,000, roughly speaking, which is not a lot of money. I'll grant you that. My issue with these dollars is if you take cost of one holiday. And divided by the rate that you show for 2022 in that column D. You've got eight hours, let's say, in, in, in most cases for that one, and then 24 hours times that base rate. But the problem I have is, is, is not that 7,000 isn't, is a large number. But 7,000 does not include the total cost of that item without the payroll taxes and the insurances. So when I get information that I feel isn't quite accurate, I have a little tough time with it. And this goes to the other two issues that we're talking about, PTO and the salary increases. So all I would tell you is, a minute ago, you were telling me it was a couple of thousand. On your sheet, it says seven, and that's without payroll taxes and insurances. So when I authorize, and I'm going to stop sharing now. When I authorize something like this at the town council level, I like to be doing it with accurate information. That's all I'm asking. We're not, we're not philosophically opposed, I'm not philosophically opposed to any of these things. I just think we need to be, you know, for the benefit of the taxpayers, we need to be looking at accurate information and, and that's all I'm going to say about it.
May I interject?
Sure.
That the, the, it is my contention that those numbers are, are, are too high because. Because none of the people but the, but the police. Will be paid a stipend for those three holidays. We, I mean, yes, they will, it would be a benefit that we have to, uh, tell our employees. But I can, I can list employee numbers who will not be paid overtime, 304, 306. You know, all of those people will not get overtime. The only four people who will get overtime are the four officers who will work. Or the, the, the two officers who work each one of those days. And everybody else will stay home. And yes, it would be a benefit, but it will not cost time and a half to the employees. So when I.
They're going to get paid whether they're here or not. Right?
Well, but, but another cost too is that those are three additional days that the town center is going to be closed. Those are three additional days that the water department employees aren't going to be working. So while there's no monetary cost to the town, there is a productivity cost to the town.
Um, I make a motion that we approve the three holidays.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All right. Mary Lou?
Aye.
John Coker?
Aye.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
John Wall?
Opposed.
I'm opposed, but it passes three to two. All right. So holiday schedule has been dealt with. We will set up a special meeting. Mary Lou, you'll tell us when for the PTO policy. And for the salaries for the four employees. Is that right?
I will get ahold of Carl. He's very receptive. And he even was working during the holidays and was helpful with us.
Okay. Again, I'm, I'm not crazy about doing this in a piecemeal fashion, but it's what we've done. Uh, okay. HSA savings account at the last meeting.
Before we leave this subject, are we clear on what we're asking Mary Lou to come up with? We definitely want total costs. I know, Mary, you're, you're rolling your eyes, but this is like the third meeting you promised us.
Okay, John, I've had enough of that. Okay. You don't need to call me out in front of people or calling me. I've had enough. Stop it. First of all, I prefer to be called Mary Lou. All right? I'm really irritated. You, you must be an expert on everything.
All right. Calm down. So we know what we need. We'll plan, Mary Lou, you're going to give me a date and we'll have this meeting. All right?
Bob, I will, I will get ahold of you. I will, last time I sent the, the email, I put what John wanted, which were the taxes and all the. Costs. I put what you wanted. And Bill will tell you and Mark, I sent out the email to Carl Sinder. And that's how I did it. Now, I don't know what else you guys expect me to do.
Let, let's do it in a Zoom meeting so we can have back and forth.
But I will get ahold of, Bob, I will email you tomorrow afternoon and ask you to, I, I'll put down what I think you want. And then I'll send it on to Carl, but I'll give him a heads up first.
Okay. Sounds great.
Thank you.
All right. Next, next agenda item, HSA. So at the, the 2023, so at the last meeting. Uh, Bill, we decided that at the, for the HSA for this year, for 2022. We're going to continue to, to pay it out at the beginning of the year. But starting 2023 was going to be paid out quarterly. Is that correct?
That was, but we, I don't know whether we really agreed to that, but if that's agreed to, uh, we should probably reinforce it if that's what it is. So we're going to, four, four ways. So.
I think that's what we said. And the idea being that, go ahead. Go ahead.
Is it, I mean, see, that's the thing. We talked about it quarterly, but I don't think we'd really set any real time schedule. This, in the payroll system, you have to, you have to decide. I, it's not random. It's, I gotta decide. So are we? Are we paying it for equal payments at the, on the first payroll of each quarter, on the last payroll, on the middle payroll? What, what's? What's, what's the council's preference? I mean, I don't know if that's.
Let's pay on the first payroll of each quarter.
What's that?
I'd say the first payroll of each quarter beginning 2023.
Okay. Is that your motion then? Okay.
That would be my motion. Is there a second?
Can, Bob, can we discuss this when I, you know?
Well, you have a second first, Mary Lou.
Okay.
Did you second it, John?
I will.
Okay. Mary Lou, now you can.
Okay. So after the, um, December HR meeting. Which you were present, you asked me along with Mark to sit down, he sat down with the police department, Bill sat down with the. Um, deputy clerk and I met with the street and water and talked to them about what we were going to propose. And I got some feedback from all of them. And one of the biggest things that came up, which I was glad to hear, I, I didn't know. They were upset. Some people have big families and they. They have a lot of years of service and they're like, we've never abused this. We make plans for this. Now, if I have all my kids dental appointments in February. And I only get my first payment in January. Then I've got, it's up to them to keep track of it and then file the claim again. And they said, we haven't abused it. Why are you doing that? So I, I said, and I did send you an email. I told you about my visit with them and some of their concerns they had. And so I don't know why we're punishing 11 people for the person that we had to let go.
Well, I can just tell you, I don't think any company pays out all the HSA the first of the year. That's just not a reasonable way to do business.
I can find out.
Well, I, I, I just, that. I can't imagine why a company would want to give their employees that HSA money. And if that employee leaves the very next day, they get to walk away with it. I mean, and not that I'm saying our employees are going to do that, but it's just not a very good business practice.
Well, I'm just, you asked me to sit down and talk with them. We had some other concerns, some other things they want me to work on, like employee education with their. Health insurance and some other options. So I'm just, you asked me to do that. I did. I told them what the HR committee was going to recommend as far as increases and holidays and the PTO. And I thought the meeting went pretty well. So just as a thought.
Any other discussion?
Uh, might I again suggest that, that why do we have to do this in January of 2022 for something that isn't going to occur for 12 months? But it seems.
Well, the issue is kind of fresh on our minds right now. I, I, and it's on the agenda. So I, I kind of like that. But I'll, I'll leave it, leave it up to everybody else. There is a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
The only thing I would say is there are, there are two ways to address that issue. One would be what you're proposing, which is spread it out. The other would be to have. Some sort of payback requirement in the handbook that allowed for us to claw some back on a final paycheck on somebody that did leave mid-year. So that would be another option. I'm not suggesting, I mean, I, I have to say, the company that I worked for did pay it out at the beginning of the year. We were all salaried individuals, you know. But, um, if you want to do a little homework on it and see if that's what other cities and towns do, I, I really don't know what municipalities do, but I know in. In the construction game, they did pay it out at the beginning of the year, but that would be another option if we wanted to. You know, have a clawback provision if somebody did leave. At mid-year that you'd claw back some of the HSA money.
Any other discussion? All right.
A clawback would be difficult, I think.
Yeah, I think it'd be hard to, to collect that money.
I agree.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. I don't hear anybody anxious to talk. John Wall? The motion was to, um, beginning the 2023 to pay it out quarterly.
I guess I'm okay with that.
John Coker?
Well, I think.
Mike Johnstone?
Aye.
Mary Lou?
No.
I'm in favor. Okay. So we pass that one. Of. Ethics agreement. So Mike Johnstone, I think you've been working on this one.
Yes, sir. In, in concert with Consul Willoughby as well, who's done the, the writing, uh, for us on this. And we discussed this in the past. Um, the issue is to pass a ethics ordinance. That would clearly define, um, certain things such as conflict of interest. And what is or what is not. And this is basically, um, parallels, uh, state statutes. And, um, um, what I, I think would be a, um, a clear document for all. Um, the towns, uh, public officials to understand and be aware of. The circumstances along these lines. In addition to that, Consul Willoughby has distributed a. Uh, one-page conflict of interest form, which would be signed on an annual basis by each, uh. Committee, commission and town council member acknowledging the ordinance on an annual basis. I think this is a, um, good governance. Um, it, and one of the concerns last time we talked about this was. Issues where we may find ourselves in a conflict now, based on how this is written, as addressed in section 35.03D. Relative to grandfathering any existing, uh, situations, uh, within our town as of today. So this, the intent of the ordinance is going forward. Um, and, um, and I, I just open it up for discussion.
I like it. We had to fill out one of these every year when I worked.
Me too.
Yep.
As well as not-for-profits. I mean, I've signed these regardless of the, whether it be profit or not-for-profit organizations. I think it's just prudent and I think it represents, um, to our, to the residents of our town that, um, that we take this very seriously.
I think there's some state statutes, uh. That spell a lot of these conflicts out. It's good that we're getting it codified for our town, but. You know, conflict of interest is a conflict of interest and, uh. If there is one, whoever is in conflict should disclose it upfront. Ahead of time, because there are some serious ramifications.
Yes.
Criminal ramifications. Uh. If they aren't followed.
Yeah, I think we elect anybody who's raised their hand to be a part of this town. Um, in, in terms of their, what they're providing in terms of their services on behalf of the town. I think everybody should be aware of this.
Yeah, I think, you know, as far as conflicts of interest, um, in going through this, looking at 3505. Um, the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down. Says in addition to recusal, this is in a case of a conflict of interest. Public officials shall disclose any potential relationship to the clerk treasurer. I would add and town council. Within five days obtaining such knowledge, unless it's disclosed. Clerk treasurers shall retain and file all such disclosures in the event that the public official desires to abstain from voting on a particular matter. I assume that's a particular matter where he has a conflict of interest. I don't know that, that public official should have any right to vote. I mean, it's not a decision. He, he just can't vote. So I guess I have a little issue with the way this is written.
What page are you on, Bob?
Uh, this is 3505.
3505.
Fourth paragraph down. So it says here, in the event that the public official desires to abstain from voting on a particular matter. I assume that's one that he has a conflict with. There, there should be no choice there. He, he can't make that choice. He just doesn't get to vote.
Right.
And then it says here, and it goes on to say, in the event that the abstention from voting would result in a lack of quorum for the board or commission to act. Then the affected public official may vote after full disclosure. I don't think so. If you have a public, have a conflict of interest, I don't care if, if that means you don't have a quorum, then it goes to the next meeting. But if you, you shouldn't be voting to vote.
This is Chris. I, I, I don't know that that's, and this goes for any conflict of interest. This deals mostly with pecuniary. You know, to address John Coker's point. I mean, we've said this before, uh, the existing form and a lot of those things are covered. This. This goes a little bit further because it's all encompassing as Mr. Johnstone has wanted it to be applicable to everybody. Conflict of interest is something that should be disclosed. A doc, a conflict of interest can also be waived or approved once it's known. The whole purpose is transparency and having that. Now, I'm not disagreeing. I'm trying to explain why that language is as it is. I'm trying to explain why that language is as it is. It doesn't mean that you don't get to change it or have proposals. I guess the issue is, am I keeping notes here for proposal? I, I want to remind you overall, if you choose to consider this and somehow you want to consider this for possible tonight, you need a unanimous consideration. If you're just having discussion and going back to the drawing board, that's all right, too. And I'm just trying to keep up with the notes.
So you're saying, Chris, that it would be all, the only obligation of that official is to notify people of the conflict, but then he could still vote if he chose to do so?
It depends on what that conflict is and if you guys waive it. And again, if there's different language that this council wants, I'm, I'm not saying your position is wrong. This is just the version that's proposed.
But it is consistent, Chris, with the statutes.
All of this is consistent. If, if anything, there are some things that are a little more stringent.
In the statute or this?
No, we, we're more stringent. We can't be less stringent than the statutes, than state.
The state statute says that the only obligation is to say you have a conflict, but the state says it's okay to vote if you have.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that, Doc. I'm saying that duties to disclose conflicts are required. Those are laid out. You guys would like me to, I will print them off again and send them to everybody so that everybody can see the state code and the form that goes along with that and match these up. Like I said, this is just a version for your consideration. If the board, the council's pleasure is to change that, let me know what language you'd like to see in there otherwise.
Might I add something here? I think it's the, the amount of, I don't mean of the amount of conflict, but if one of you is, owns 101 shares of, of Republic stock and you're voting on renewing the contract with Republic or you're on the board of Republic, that's kind of a different flavor. I mean, you're still trying to be studious about reporting yourself, but, but 101 shares out of probably 500 million or a billion is probably not representative of a conflict. But you're being honest about your, your owning of some shares of Republic.
Well, and again, I think some of this is discerning between pecuniary or financial interest versus personal interest or relationship. Most of, you know, the form that has been discussed in the past and that has become an issue deal with personal interest, financial gain versus having a relationship. Like I said, if there are.
Fade that way, Chris. Fade that way. Repeat what you said.
I couldn't if I wanted to. Most, most of the conflict language and the state code deals with pecuniary, financial interests, right? This also goes, again, if there's relationship, disclosing that. So maybe we need to delve that out a little bit more versus, you know, personal relationship, financial. This goes a little bit further than the state code and the issues or conflicts, you know, this thing has reared its head before of discussions of whether individuals should or shouldn't file them. That form that has been discussed at length in the past is the state-issued form that goes to financial interests. So again, if there's language that you'd like to see, you can send me comments, you know, I, Mr. Johnston's hope was to, to, you know, have this. This draft's been out there for comments and any changes and, you know.
Well, what, what's the pleasure? Does the rest of the town council think that somebody with a conflict of any sort ought to be voting? I mean, to me, they just ought to recuse themselves. But, but if nobody else thinks, feels that way, then, then we let it go.
Or, or maybe we need to delve the, what the nature of the conflict out a little bit more, right? And what that is, if it defined conflict a little finer, right? Is it just financial, is it having knowledge? So because again, the financial interests go to, will it benefit the employer official or a member of that person's household, et cetera?
Which is specified in here.
I like it. I, I've signed one every year I ever worked.
I'm, I'm good with the whole idea. I just, my only concern is, is that, that paragraph that allows people with a conflict to vote.
Well, and the other option is you don't have to pass an ordinance on the same night. So you can consider this and be ready with any additional suggestions prior to next month if you want to keep this moving along without punting it in general.
The one question I've heard, can we, can we approve, can we take action on this though, subject to the change that Bob has requested?
We can vote on it tonight and first reading, right? And then.
That, that's what I was getting to.
Yeah. Yeah, let's do it that way.
That's right.
That moves on. You don't have to worry about having unanimous vote and do it all in one night. And everybody doesn't have to make that decision under the gun to make sure that any language is still amended.
I like that approach.
All right, I think that sounds good. So entertain to attach this on first reading. That was the motion. Is there a second?
I would second.
I'm in favor. Mary Lou?
Yes, yes.
Mike Johnston?
Hi.
John Coker?
Hi.
John Wall?
Hi.
So Chris, can you maybe bring this back with the changes that we've talked about to the next meeting and we can pass it on second reading?
Sure.
Great, okay. Moving right along. Of Public Works, that's still a work in progress, isn't it?
Yeah, there's nothing to update on there.
Okay, Bill, you're up.
Here's a survey. And since it follows the ethics discussion, the two people who did this, who were in charge of this, neither one are residents of the town of Long Beach. They are so ethical that they make the rest of us look like robber barons. But I want that announced first before we go any further. They left the survey open a little longer because of the problems that we had with the mail. As it turned out, I think the, you know, the final votes came in and they were about even. But they, they tried to make every, give everybody a chance. They went through and they studied every resident. So if you had more than one home, you were allowed to make more than, if you had two homes, you were allowed to make two votes. But nobody was allowed to make a vote. We, we had to dump a few votes where the people were, were voted more than one from the same residence or, or they gave up. We got some votes from New Buffalo. And so we had to eliminate those two. But there were 599 surveys total. And I can provide these details for everybody. The question one was, do you feel the town has a deer overpopulation problem? Yes, no? There were 288 votes, yes. 303 votes, no. No answer to question one, five. So we, we had 288 to 303. But yeah, the second question is a little more confusing to me. But this says, if so, should the town do anything about it? And the question was, yes to question two, 268, and no to question two, 255. No answer to question two was 75. And I, you know, we can do an analysis of why people voted that way. So, but anyway, it was, it was no problem, no town problem, 303. Yes, a town problem, 288. And then, yes, we should do something, 268. No, we should do nothing, 255. And I'll provide all the detail to the council in the part of the minutes.
So in summary, there were, there were more people who felt we did not have a problem.
Yes.
Than thought we did.
Yeah, it looks like 15 more thought there was no problem, 288 to 303 is 15 and then five did not answer. Now, I'm assuming that some of the people who thought they, they didn't, we didn't have a problem and maybe thought they didn't need to vote again on the second half, but.
But 303 people said we didn't have a problem and only 288 thought we did.
Yeah, and yes, the question two, yes, 268 people thought we should do something and 255 people thought we should not do anything.
Okay. But more people felt we did not have a deer problem than thought we did.
Yep.
Then, then I would make a motion, we put this baby to bed. If more people think we don't have a deer problem, I'm, I'm done making people mad. Next town council can deal with it.
Yeah, and Bob, I think in support of your comment, I think that second question's really intended that if we felt that the ratio had been the other way around, we had a problem, should the town take care of it? It's more relevant than the way it turned out. So I would agree with you.
Okay, so my motion is we, we put the deer hunt on the back burner and the next town council, well, in fact, I, I'm not bringing it up again. It's just not going to happen.
I mean, can we have, we have a group that has done an awful lot of research on, you know, a lot of things that could help reduce the deer population. And I, I would hate to see that go to waste. It's not, it's not shooting them. It was a different plan, so.
Well, if they want to make a presentation to council, that would be fine, but.
Okay, they did. They have done, they have continued to research different places in Michigan and all different types of things on a deer reduction program.
Yep.
And, and, yeah, and educating residents, God love the residents, but don't feed them. And I, and I can't, and I'm just giving you a small part of it because I've read some of the things they've sent us. But I will tell you, when I was at West Yellowstone, they have a big grizzly bear park because people fed the grizzlies. Then they can't go back into the wild because they get so used to being fed by the public. So that's another part of our issue. And no, we're not going to open a park for them, so.
Yeah, feeding, feeding the deer is the worst thing anybody out there can do. I mean, you're doing harm to the deer and, and you're making them tame and that's a.
Yeah.
It's, it's counterproductive. Don't feed them.
And good luck convincing those people who continue to feed them not to because.
No kidding.
Yeah, that's just not going to happen, unfortunately. Okay, that suckers to the bed. I've had it with that.
Hey, one quick question. Bob, in the interest of, in the interest of all the hard work that went into this survey, Bill, you mentioned that you had to leave it open because the mail and then you had people that had more than one home had additional votes. Do you have a feel for how many people that were in that category?
There were very, I, I, Deanna, I talked to and she said, she said there might, because she would come in and say, this person has voted twice for two different residences. And we looked them up and they did own two different residences. But I don't think there were that many of those people that voted from two residences. I ne, I never did receive a survey. So there was really a, a problem with, with that. And I did, I did fill out a survey and my, my survey results are private. But, but I did, I, I, you know, I, I did have to get that. And some other people did not also. And my up-the-hill neighbor got his, but I did not get mine, so it.
How, how much longer do we leave it open? Just, just so we all are on the same page?
I don't think, I don't, we haven't gotten any surveys lately. I mean, so it, it seems to be, it seems to be done. I talked to a few people who said, oh, yeah, I got that, but I didn't, I decided not to vote.
Can I actually say something? This is Deanna.
Go ahead, Deanna.
Um, we ended up, Renee and I ended up keeping it open until almost December 10th because it was after the holidays also. The, the, you know, the cutoff was supposed to be the 22nd before Thanksgiving. And when we started noticing big batches of them coming in after, we realized maybe it was the mail. So we let it stay open until the 10th. I have gotten a few stragglers, but I stamp at the date that I receive it and, and say that it is after the cutoff. And we have not included those, but we've kept them. I haven't tallied them, but we, we are keeping them.
How, how many, Deanna?
Oh, maybe nine, 10, something like that.
Not enough that it would have changed the results, correct?
I don't know. I didn't look at them. I just stamped it.
288 to 303 is more than, you know, the difference there is more than nine, so, yeah. So I, yeah, I, I think we're done.
Did you second and vote on that or?
Well, I don't think we need to because we're not doing anything. But, but we will go ahead and if, if the, you know, we already know what the plan of the people who are going to conduct the deer hunt was. I guess if the people who want to try and reduce the deer population want to send us their suggestions. But again, we have more people who think we don't have a deer problem than think we do. So if you don't have a problem, if there's no problem, there's nothing to fix.
Well, to Mary Lou's comment, there's, the group is still looking at deer control. So I mean, we're open to listen to their presentation at some point, I mean, their recommendations. I think that's the right answer.
Yep, I'm good with that. My email is open as, as all you guys are. So be happy to, to hear from them. Okay, staggered elections. Chris, is there anything new on that or is that still a work in progress?
Well, Mr. Coker and I spoke and as you know, he, he's the sponsor, I guess, of this ordinance. I have not received any feedback. We have plenty of time, but as these things go, you have to do it a year before the election. So, you know, I guess I don't want to speak for Mr. Coker, but our hope is that, you know, at some point, the council acts on this. So, you know, at, at worst, maybe come back at, at next month's meeting, ready to take action on it, unless there are some changes because it's, it was out there and the draft has been proposed and I, I haven't received any feedback on it at all.
Yeah, I suggest we put it on. I suggest we put it on the agenda for next meeting and vote on it.
And Chris, could you send out another copy of that just so I can make sure I looked at it? I, it's, it's been on here for so long, I can't remember what I did with it.
I, I, it's to everybody and copy Bill and Deanna.
All right, we'll make sure it's on the agenda. Okay, new business. The committee appointments. So this is the first meeting of the new year. And so some of the members of committees, their appointments have ended. And so I'm going to go through the list. First is Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals. That's the EBCA. And Barb Morgan's appointment has ended. She was, her term was through 2021. This, this board is appointed by the council. Or her position is appointed by the council. Yeah, she was a council appointment. So I, I guess I'd make a motion she be reappointed.
Does she want to be?
Uh, she hasn't told me otherwise, so I'm going to assume she does. If she doesn't, I will let you know.
Was anybody else interested?
Well, that's the thing, you know, we, we probably should have put this out last month so people could, you know, put their name in. Although I have to tell you, we've, we've had openings on the Building Commission and one other.
Water Department?
Water Department. And we put it out there that we're looking for people. We haven't gotten any volunteers.
And the HR committee, can we wait one more month? And then can we contact Barb and see if she really wants to be on?
We could, we could.
Who, who all needs to be appointed? I, I don't like this thrown at me at the last minute here.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's, yeah, I apologize. I, I didn't really realize this was coming up. So what we've got is we've got Barb Morgan, whose appointment is ending on the EBCA.
Okay.
The Building Commission, we've never have had a replacement for Tom McDonald.
Okay.
The APC, both those appointments, there's two people who are two, Anita Remigius and Mike Gorman. Those are both presidential appointments. Police Commission, there are three members to be reappointed because those are annual positions. Those are also presidential appointments. Water Advisory Committee, all appointed by the president. Bob Gallagher needs to be replaced. Although his term was through 2022, he's moved away from the, from Long Beach. Laura Kozimsky, her term is up. Rick Remigius, his term is up.
From the Water Department?
Yes.
Okay. Those are all presidential?
Let me look again. Water Board, yeah, one, one, one member from the town council and all the other ones are appointed by the president.
Okay. Well, I think I could come up with some people for you to choose.
So maybe what we can do is post what positions are available. Does that sound like a plan? Park Board, Candace Bartlett, her term is up. She's appointed by the. Park Board, Candace Bartlett, her term is up. She's appointed by the council. Budget and Finance. I'd actually like to step down from that committee and have John Wall be on that committee. He's much clever with the budget and finance stuff than I am. I'll still attend. But he ought to be on the meeting, especially since he's doing the bulk of the work at this point.
There's another opening there. Bob, I'd be happy to volunteer for that committee as well.
Okay. And then, and then HR. We need one, one person to replace Mike Konzak. And that's, those are the appointments. So what I can do is I can post which committees are available. We can see who I hear from and then bring it back to next month. As long as we can vote to extend everybody who is on this list term on their committee for one more month.
Okay, so we can just get the list off of the town.
I will, I will get it up website tomorrow.
Okay.
So I'll take care of that. Okay. Okay, so that's it. I'll get that on the website. Then, Public Comments. Again, we're going to limit this to two minutes. John, you're running this meeting, John Wall. So I'm going to let you, because I can't bring people in, I'll let you run it because I'm on my iPad.
Okay, I'll just have to scroll through and see if I can see any hands raised. I don't know if the way we had this set up, they can actually raise their hands, but I'll keep looking. I'm in third page.
There's a hand.
Phyllis Baker and Anita.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the lower page. I've got, hold on, I've got one individual here. Mr. Dubon?
That's right. Good evening, Board. My name is William Dubon. And with Joe Cosma to Dr. Lemay's comments, we are the neighbors on 1421 Lake Shore Drive, where their lots 31 and 33, they're asking for permission. We are very extremely concerned about that. I'm not only a neighbor, but I'm an engineer that I work with building codes and municipalities around the nation. And this is a very special lot with the only way to build is on the side of the dune. Our home is over 100 years old and we can tell you that it has had movement through the years. We have put pylons, so the neighbors, I mean, prior owners, they did a lot of work into it. As Dr. Lemay mentioned, there were three variances that they were open for discussion. One was in front of the EBCA. The other two were withdrawn and that's why we're concerned. One of them had to deal with the height. The proposed building is proposing a height of 60 feet, which goes beyond any scope of residential codes. So we're very confident it still was deemed that it was not required a variance. The other variance was requested for, and this ordinance, all three of one of the Long Beach ordinance, with really sites that in any steep lots, there has to be any engineering done before anything can be considered. And we're asking, and we asked many people, this needs to be enforced before, before the fact. Once again, this is, this lot can only be built in the site. We'll look into building into this lot and we can tell you that the cost of civilizing this dune is way up to $80,000, $90,000 per pylon and they request about 16 pylons. We're asking just here, we're raising our hand and awareness that liabilities and safety is at risk. And it seems that we're bypassing the process. We're putting, you know, many of the horses, the carriage. And it's very concerning that nobody's paying attention to us. We have joined many of the board meetings, many. And once again, at some point I was mocked because I have worked in many other municipalities. And this is Long Beach. It's not Miami. It's not Las Vegas. And I do have experience and liability in this kind of lots. We're asking those to pay attention when they're doing this permit should not be even considered until engineering is done. And unfortunately, you know, we have not, we are not heard. You guys give us no other recourse that to seek legal action here.
Mr. Dubon, I appreciate what you're saying, but you're talking to the wrong audience. You need to be at the building commission meeting on Friday at 1:00. They're the one, no, this is the meeting, this is the meeting where their permit will be considered.
No, I get muted. I get muted at the request of the O'Neill's. I get muted and I'm unable.
No, no, you will not be muted. You'll get a chance to speak. I will be there. In fact, I think I'll be running the meeting, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Lemay. I appreciate it.
Friday, 1:00. That's who you need to be talking to. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dubon. I've got Phyllis Baker.
Hi, Phyllis Baker, 2105 Oak and Wall. Dr. Yuhaus, Janice Roberts and I are members of the Deer Committee. We've been working very hard on recommendations, possible solutions to the deer population in Long Beach. And after the vote, we got, we talked to each other very quickly. We do feel like we have something to offer. And we have a report that we can give you in March. That's the time that we were originally given to give a report. But we feel like there's a lot we can do in terms of education about feeding the deer, about deer resistant planting, ticks, deer vehicle interactions. And so you will have our report. And if you have any questions, you could ask me now or or get ahold of it later. But, but anyway, I'm just letting you know that we do intend on giving a report. We really have put a lot of work into this and we'd like the community to have the information and certainly the town council.
Good.
Sounds like a good option. Good.
Thank you.
Got Anita Remigius? You're still muted, Anita.
She's not there.
Oh, I just asked her to unmute. I'll give her another couple.
Sorry about that. Sorry. Hi, everybody. Anita Remigius, 2300 Floramon. Just a couple comments. Thank you for the, for tabulating, Deanna, the deer results. Number two, there was a mention by Mary Lou McFadden about cottonwoods being junk trees. She first mentioned, you know, thank you to the tree board and then turned around. It was pretty passive aggressive. Number one, tree board, thank you for looking into this. Number two, cottonwoods are junk trees. And sometimes comments are inappropriate. I thought that was inappropriate because cottonwoods do serve a purpose. And we've had ongoing issues with cottonwoods at stop 16 and now stop 13. There are the ethics ordinance. I understand that people do sign them. But if state statutes parallel the ethics ordinance, I'm not sure what we're doing here. If this is a punitive thing, if this is just to catch up what it is. And the fourth thing is that I listen to these meetings. And John Wall and others, particularly John, has asked for every month the same figures. And every month he's told that the email has come or the email is coming. And for finger pointing and name calling because you're not getting your way to be done is inappropriate in my estimation. Thank you.
I don't see anybody else if there are.
Okay, I have, I have a comment. Thank you. Hi. My name is Donna Kavanaugh, 2104 Avondale Drive, Long Beach. I just want to say to the town council members, I know it's been tough regarding the deer situation. But I'm very grateful that you took the time to get a survey out and you're respecting the will of the people, even though it's a very tight race. They've decided to not do the deer hunt. I appreciate both sides that were doing work this past couple of months on the committee that you appointed to look at the situation and see where we go from here. So I just wanted to say thank you. And you know, I did my own survey last fall. I personally called 501 individuals in Long Beach and the response was basically the same that you had. Most of the people said they didn't want the deer hunt, but they did want something done. And so I appreciate the fact that you're looking into what can be done going forward and you're listening to the people of Long Beach. Thank you very much.
I don't see any other individuals with hands raised. But if you, if you don't have, if you're not able to raise your hand and you want to make a comment, you just need to speak up.
Any council comments? Bill, claims approval?
Check number 18622 through 18638 totaling $113,566.72. Do I have a motion for approval?
Don't move. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Coker?
I'm in favor. Mary Lou?
Hi.
John Coker?
Hi.
John Wall?
Hi.
Mike Johnstone?
Hi.
Good deal. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
Mary Lou?
Hi.
John Coker?
Hi.
John Wall?
Hi.
I'm in favor. Mary Lou? Night, everybody.
Night. Thank you.